Good afternoon, everyone. Today is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Today is May 23, 2023. It's great to see a full-packed house here. Obviously, everyone's excited about our agenda. Mayor Protem, do we have any introductions or announcements?
I don't believe I have any introductions. I'm just going to scan the audience real quick. I don't see anyone that isn't on the agenda already, so I will go into announcements. So I am pleased to announce that I will be engaging in a series of outreach efforts with a goal of connecting in person with Prescott citizens. Here are some details, and also keep a look on the website for these as well. There will be open office hours at the Prescott Public Library, starting on May 30, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., then monthly, on the third Tuesday of each month, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Prescott Public Library. I'll also be at the Prescott Farmer's Market on Saturday, June 3, from 7:30 to noon. Look for my table. I'll have a citizen survey cards and some fun giveaways, including, I think, some wildflowers. I will also be doing a Facebook Live on Tuesday, June 20, at 1:00 p.m. My first guest will be our new city manager, Katie Gregory. Log on to the city Facebook page to watch live, or you can watch it later on Facebook or the city's YouTube channel. Second, the City of Prescott's Recreation Services Park Rangers have created a free Junior Ranger program to promote the Appreciate Arizona, Leave No Trace principles, while also teaching ecology, culture, history, and outdoor recreational opportunities to the Prescott area. This program consists of a free downloadable guidebook that maps out all of Prescott's historic sites and outdoor recreational spaces, while teaching participants proper outdoor ethics. It will also be available in print at select locations. Within the guidebook is a special passport to Prescott's museums and local attractions. Those who visit at least seven passport sites and take the Appreciate Arizona, Leave No Trace pledge will earn a Prescott Junior Ranger badge. While supplies last, printed copies of the guidebook and badges will be available to those who sign up for the Prescott Library Youth Services Summer Reading Program at our Recreation Services Department and at the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. They are seeking sponsors to help grow and sustain this program in the future. If you're interested, visit prescottjuniorranger/naturenino site online to donate, or download your free copy of the Junior Ranger Guidebook. Questions or suggestions can be sent to the City of Prescott Park Rangers at sean.underhill@prescott-az.gov. And third, this weekend, come to the Yavapai County Courthouse Plaza for the 49th Fippen Western Art Show and Sale, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Outstanding Western artists from around the country will show and sell their fine art. Enjoy this signature event in Prescott. For more information, go to fippenartmuseum.org. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Dan Hurlbert of the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, we thank you for your presence here in this meeting. Keep us mindful that there is no place we can go that you are not present. Rather, we have come here because you are already here, and we have come to do your will and strive for the common good. At the end of the school year, we give you thanks for faculty, staff, and administrators who have helped to prepare our young people for a life ahead. Be with our young people and help them to have a safe and happy summer. We thank you for those who provide emergency medical service, and we ask that you give them strength as they practice the art and science of healing. We thank you for your blessings, which are too numerous to mention, and we pray that you will send your spirit to guide our thoughts and actions, in the name of the One in whom we live and move and have our being. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
And if you'll stay standing, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilwoman Tenny.
Yes, ma'am.
All are present.
Very good. Now, we'll have a presentation of the recognition of Prescott Fire Department Paramedic of the Year, Jeff Jones.
All right. Mayor and Council, Holger Dura Fire Chief, I am very proud today to present to you one of our paramedics. It's also fitting that we present the Paramedic of the Year, and afterwards, we're going to be doing EMS Week proclamation. So it's a very good combination. So just as a reminder, obviously, one of our primary mission sets is to provide EMS services. And in my first year as chief, as you can imagine, there were a lot of problems brought to my door, but I consistently kept hearing about this gentleman on one of our crews that was delivering this high-quality care, and I had to find out more. Well, come to find out, I want to really highlight two particular events that are pretty impressive. So Jeff, in winter of '21, was called to Lamb Chevrelay for an individual experiencing some chest pain and discomfort. And while most EMS providers would immediately think of a cardiac event, he really did a differential diagnosis that ended up in the patient getting choppered to definitive care down in Phoenix after conferring with the emergency room doctor, and unequivocally saving this gentleman's life through his care and his experience. The other thing is, in spring of this year, we experienced a patient having cardiac arrest, and during that event, once again, his patient advocacy is what truly came through to ensure that that gentleman walked out of the hospital neurologically intact, to the point where we believe he actually had some interactions with some of our staff at the Home and Garden Show this weekend, which is the whole purpose of what we do every day. And so with that, I want to recognize Jeff Jones very deservedly as the Paramedic of the Year.
I have to say, actually, I want to face this direction if I could. I want to thank you for all my friends and family that were able to make it here today. I am humbled. In my 25 years with the Prescott Fire Department, I have never seen a mayor, city manager, city council, and a fire chief that were more unified in the direction of the fire department than we are right now. We're able to clearly communicate our needs and desires to the city council, and they've been absolutely fantastic at helping us achieve the goals that we have to serve our customers best. Honestly, I could talk about training, I could talk about experience and drive, but all the things that brought me to this point, but if it weren't for the help and the support that we receive from you, our city leadership, none of this would be possible. It's an honor and a blessing to be part of a team that cares so much for the people that we serve. Thank you for trusting me to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Jones. Congressman Crane sends his regrets. Congressman Crane sends his regrets that he wasn't able to be here today to see you and give you this award. It's fitting that it was me, though, right? I love you, brother. So that was the beginning. I'm going to try to get through this without shedding any tears, but Jeff Jones is a fantastic person, besides being an amazing paramedic. There's quite literally, as Chief Dura said, people in this city that are walking around today because of what he does every day. He advocates for the people that he cares for. And so it's my privilege today to give you the certificate of achievement awarded to Jeff Jones, Paramedic of the Year, for his amazing work for the City of Prescott Fire Department in Arizona's 2nd Congressional District, signed this May 23, 2023, by Elijah Crane, Congressman. And I would totally be remiss if I didn't ask everybody to, because most people probably in here don't know, today's his birthday. So we need to sing "Happy Birthday" to him. So. [singing] Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Jeff Jones. Happy birthday to you. [applause] And again, I love you, brother.
Boy, anytime we have a chance to recognize not only an individual who's done such a remarkable job representing the Prescott Fire Department and our city, but it's just another example of the opportunity we have to say thank you for this great fire department and the leadership that we have here. Thank you all.
I'll let the mayor get back to his seat, but then we will start with proclamations. And first up, we'll have Councilwoman Cantelme presenting Emergency Medical Services Week 2023, May 21 through the 27.
While we're getting set up, I just want to thank all you firemen. Thank you for your service. As a proud mom of a firefighter for almost 19 years, I never leave my phone when my son is at the station, and I've been doing that for 19 years. The things that these guys go through is just unspeakable. So thank a fireman today. Thank you, Chief Dura. So this is the Emergency Medical Services Week from May 21 to May 27, 2023. And a lot of whereas is here. So whereas Emergency Medical Services are a vital public safety service, and whereas this year's theme is MS, Where Emergency Care Begins, the members of the Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas throughout the current public health emergency our country has faced related to COVID-19, this team has stood out in the front lines. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams engage in thousands of hours, specialized training, and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, to hereby recognize the week of May 21 through the 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme MS, Where Emergency Care Begins, I encourage the community to recognize and thank our frontline heroes who are dedicated to providing emergency medicine that saves so many lives every day.
Thank you very much. Thanks again. You guys do a great job.
[applause] More words?
[inaudible]
Very good. Next will be a proclamation on National Public Works Week. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a lot of representatives from our City of Prescott Public Works Department, and I'd like to invite all of you up here, if you would like to come. You can fill in. So come on up. [applause]
Wow.
[inaudible]
This is awesome.
Get comfortable.
Hide in the back.
That's okay.
You're like the last one to come up.
More important that you get to the front.
Hi.
Good. Good.
It works for me.
Switch the mayor, Protem, to this one over here.
We tried that earlier, verbally.
Worked together, she felt better.
Yeah. Well, this is very impressive. The city's in good hands. I'm pleased today to present the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals operate and maintain infrastructure and facilities while providing services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and safety, a high quality of life, and the well-being of the citizens of Prescott. And whereas this infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are workers, specialists, operators, supervisors, engineers, managers, inspectors, and support staff responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our city's streets, water, wastewater, solid waste, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens of Prescott to gain knowledge of the and understanding of the public works projects and programs in the community, now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, to hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week, to recognize the contributions which public works staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you very, very much. [applause] When would you like to say a few words?
It's okay. So we just want to say thank you for recognizing Public Works Week. We're a department of 163. You're welcome. We didn't bring them all to here today. But we do have a wonderful representation of all the areas of work here in our department. If you turned on your water faucet today, flushed your toilet, drove on a city street, went through a traffic light, if someone picked up your trash today, these are the people that you can say thank you to. So thank you for recognizing Public Works Week. [applause]
I don't think John Heine has a wide enough wide-angle lens to get everybody into that photo.
Oh. Quinn.
Proclamation. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. Need to pick your elevator.
Fortunately, they can take the stairs. All right. All right, I think we can move on to the open call of the public.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I think everyone should have been notified of the alterations we've made in the conditions of the open call of the public that was distributed through a public service announcement and a publication.
It was, yes, and I'll go over all that when I read the intro here. But we did release a press release last week with regard to some revisions that we've made to the open call to the public, which I'll cover. City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the postage agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing council regarding the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor as well. At this time, I have one speaker card, Mayor, and it's from Bob Haring.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, thank you for seeing me today.
And sir, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
Make sure you speak into the microphone.
I come here today to speak to you regarding surface water management and the storm Friday that we had, which was devastating for my property in Yavapai Hills. I have provided Kathy Rusing, Councilman, I'm sorry, with a video of that event. I also have it on my phone. I'm sorry, I'm not technologically adept to provide it on a larger venue, but this flood was devastating. It was surface water runoff. It came down Hornet. It banked up at the corner of Hornet and Cabot, and then came across my property. This is the third event in five years that this has happened. I've replaced the soils up to this point, but, and I also have photos and whatnot that I've copied that you can have to review. It's gotten to the point now where my wife and I don't travel during monsoon season because we are concerned of an event such as this. This water, at this particular event, came clear to my home. Had I not been there to clear out the swale, which was really overrun with hail and debris coming off the hill, it would have come in my home. This is the worst in five years that I've seen. I'm asking the city to take a look at this. You own the first 10 feet of my property from the backside of the sidewalk in towards my property as a utilities easement. I have bermed that somewhat, which in the photos and the video will show you that it kept, it did what I intended it to do, but it would be a massive outlay and expense for me alone to cover all of this. And my feeling is that we need to share this. We need to deal with it, because at some point, if this event wasn't the worst, it probably isn't. Next time, it could be in my home. And it's a simple fix with rock and a collection swale down the hill, which is what I have now, which the photos clearly show, is now gone, based on this last event. It's very devastating the way, and my home is unfortunately the only one where the soils pile up coming down Cabot and Hornet. And so I'm asking for some help on that.
What's your name and address again?
It's Bob Haring, H-E-A-R-I-N-G, 900 Cabot Lane, corner of Cabot and Hornet in Yavapai Hills.
Making a note of that?
Yes, Mayor, we have a note of that, and we've already discussed with our public works folks, and they are going to be looking into this issue in the very near term to talk with you and reach out to you on this as well.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any items from consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull items B, as in boy, and E, as in eel.
I also would like to pull item G myself. So we have three items to be pulled, and I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mayor, I move to approve consent to items A through G, excluding B, E, and G.
No.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Councilman Rusing, 9B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason why I pulled this paving project, Yavapai Hills Drive, is I just want to emphasize in lieu of the previous call to the public speaker how important engineering for stormwater and drainage is. And as you know, Yavapai Hills is on a very steep hill. It's an older subdivision, and I think the drainage wasn't done very well. And on top of that, we now have climate change, where we have storms that are extremely at both ends of the extreme. So my question is, I'd like to have a discussion as to this paving project. Has there been any engineering for stormwater and dirt runoff or mitigation? Any attempts to divert the water and prevent future problems? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. This project, Councilmember Rusing, is strictly a paving project, milling the existing asphalt that is there currently and replacing it. It's an area of very distressed asphalt. It's beyond the point where streets can do any pothole repairs in this area. The picture where it says, it gives an example on the left-hand side, is the intersection of Yavapai Hills Drive and Lee Boulevard, just adjacent to the fire station. So this project is not doing any drainage improvements there. As we speak, it's currently surface water runoff. There's vertical curbs on both sides of the streets, but we're not taking any of the curbs out. We're just putting the asphalt in back as it is currently, as it exists today.
So are you saying there aren't any drainage or runoff problems on this section of Yavapai Hills Drive?
Not that I have been made aware of, no.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. I just wanted to emphasize the fact that we need to look at engineering in the future for stormwater and runoff problems, so that we don't have any problems like we're currently experiencing out there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns on that issue? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve consent item 9B.
Second. Motion as second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Councilmember Rusing, item 9E.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is a contract with Bennett Oil for three years of site fueling for gasoline and diesel. And it's estimated that our city fleet uses 260,000 gallons of fuel a year, and this adds up to a little over $1 million expenditure. And I would just like to take the opportunity that we don't have any hybrids or EVs in our fleet, and maybe it's time that we start looking at maybe saving some money, saving the taxpayers some money that is spent over $1 million a year. And I would like to ask our new city manager if she has any input or any thoughts as to what we can do to reduce our fuel bill. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I think as a city, we can look from a policy standpoint if we want to start investing in EV and hybrid vehicles. Certainly, there's a cost to that, but then a cost savings on the gas side. So we can certainly look at that and see which vehicles, not all vehicles, or not all jobs and activities are conducive to EV vehicles. They tend to be more for administrative uses than for the actual work that has to be done out in the field. So we'd have to look at how many of those we have, how it moves the needle, and maybe come back to council with some recommendations on that. As far as fuel savings, certainly, I think that all departments work on trying to ensure that they're getting the best, or at least through these contracts, getting our best bulk price that we can get, when we don't have that many choices to make. But absolutely, we can look on a go-forward basis what that might look like.
Thank you, Katie. And do we have any public...
Passes seven zero.
All right, Councilmember Rusing, item 9E.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is a contract with Bennett Oil for three years of site fueling for gasoline and diesel. And it's for, we, it's estimated that our city fleet uses 260,000 gallons of fuel a year, and this adds up to a little over a million-dollar expenditure. And I would just like to take the opportunity that we don't have any hybrids or EVs in our fleet, and maybe it's time that we start looking at maybe saving some money, saving the taxpayers some money that is spent over a million dollars a year. And I would like to ask our new city manager if she has any input or any thoughts as to what we can do to reduce our fuel bill. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I think as a city, we can look from a policy standpoint if we want to start investing in EV and hybrid vehicles. Certainly, there's a cost to that, but then a cost savings on the gas side. So we can certainly look at that and see which vehicles, not all vehicles, or not all jobs and activities are conducive to fleet vehicle, or to EV vehicles. They tend to be more for administrative uses than for the actual work that has to be done out in the field. So we'd have to look at how many of those we have, how it moves the needle, and maybe come back to council with some recommendations on that. As far as fuel savings, certainly, I think that all departments work on trying to ensure that they're getting the best, or at least through these contracts, getting our best bulk price that we can get when we don't have that many choices to make. But absolutely, we can look on a go-forward basis what that might look like.
Thank you, Katie. And do we have any public input? Public comment?
Would you like to take public comment, Mayor?
I'd like to make.
Or let council speak.
We can entertain some public comment.
Mayor, I press my button to speak as well. You can do it in any order you like, of course.
Where the heck is this?
Good afternoon, I'm Patrick Grady.
Hold on one moment, Mr. Grady. Just one second, because we do have some council comment.
Thank you.
Well, I don't see any requests, but Councilman Tanny?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a really quick question on this, as long as we pulled it from the consent agenda. The council memo that we've got lists the bidded price at OPIS plus 95 cents per gallon, and the Bennett Oil submittal lists the price at OPIS plus nine and a half cents a gallon. I was just wondering which, which of those decimal points is in the wrong place?
It's a great question.
I think what we're looking at is the overall price of the bid, but I'm not sure where we're, where we're at with the, with the decimal points.
Oh, I see what you're, yeah, .095 versus .95.
It's the lower one.
I think it's the lower one.
Mayor and Councilmember Tanny, it is the lesser decimal price.
Well, that's good. That'll, that'll save us like $10 million if I do the math right.
Thank you. We're always looking out for the taxpayers.
That's right.
That was odd. I mean, I didn't mean to be facetious.
Very effective if we could move the decimal point without any investment.
Can you do that a couple more times?
Yeah, sure, add another zero.
All right, any public comment?
Yes, Patrick Grady.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Patrick Grady, 943 West Rosser Street. Continue to be grateful for the support that you provided to us with respect to the Protect Campaign and the Quad Cities Climate Profile. And now we're moving more into local climate actions. And this really, I think, this particular item gave us an opportunity to at least raise the issue of electric vehicle electrification. We all want clean air. We all want to reduce our own truck and, and car gasoline expenses as a household, and I suspect the same thing is true for our city. I should point out that we're also presenting to Prescott Valley Town Council on the larger issue of climate change and our local climate action report next week. So we're, we're happy to be before them next week as well. So yes, when you think about a million dollars, hopefully, as the city manager indicated, there's some ways to look at reducing those costs. And we have a very strong partner, the Prescott Electric Vehicle Association, that we think can be helpful to the city's assessment, which the call for that municipal fleet assessment was actually in our local climate action options report. Regrettably, she couldn't be here today, but I, I really want to raise this because I think she could be a valuable technical asset. Catherine Stinkin is a resident of Prescott, but as I said, she couldn't be here today. But she's the Vice President of Policy at the Electrification Coalition. She leads and manages the policy team at that particular coalition, focusing on transitioning our transportation sector to electric vehicles. And I think at some point, it would be worthy of your time, my time as well, to meet Catherine and have her share some of that expertise from, from a national perspective. The Electrification Coalition is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that develops and implements strategies to overcome the national security challenges that stem from America's dependence on oil. So whether you look at it from a climate perspective, from a resiliency perspective, this is really an important issue, and I hope we can find some, some time to utilize some of the expertise that we have here within the city of Prescott to help our Public Works Department that we celebrated today to look further into vehicle electrification. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item E. Second?
Motion is second, please vote. Very good. I chose to pull item 9G, just because I think some of the members of the council may not have had a chance to review some of the really remarkable marketing material that was developed by Heart and Soul Media, and we're looking at a renewal of that contract. So John Heine, I know you were very much involved in that generation of that marketing agreement. So please proceed in giving us a little update on that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, John Heine with the Tourism and Economic Development Office. And you have before you a request to approve a contract with Heart and Soul Media Group for economic development and tourism marketing. This would actually be a one-year contract, but it actually would be our third year of work with Heart and Soul. And in 2021, the city engaged Heart and Soul after an RFP process. We created some really moving creative that talks about Prescott as business unusual, as a place to come and get out of the city life and enjoy a lifestyle as well as have your business here. We do have all that media material residing on our website. Did some great creative with that with some local business leaders. In year two, we focused on the Prescott business website. They really helped us to get that site optimized, make it look good and function well mobily as well as on the desktop. So we have a third year that we're looking for, and then actually an option for a fourth to create some more creative and to tell more stories about business people in Prescott that are doing great things. So that's what you have before you. And then also, just to let you know, they were not able to be here today, so they did share some information with me that I can pass on to you, and I think to the mayor's point of some of the performance metrics, key performance indicators for this campaign. So results of the campaign to date, 2.8 million impressions, 13,800 total clicks, and then 54 leads. So those leads come through an email service to our Economic Development Office. We have a chance to talk to these businesses and hopefully reel some of them in and bring them into Prescott. So it's a very strong performing campaign. It's very targeted into where it's located and where it goes. We go to several surrounding states, talking not just to business leaders and CEOs, but also HR professionals who may be thinking about having a business retreat here. So that kind of gets to our tourism and our group business as well. So it kind of does double duty, works very well. So we're looking forward to working with them again with your approval.
Yeah, and I think even the, the marketing identification of business unusual was extremely timely, because that was developed before the whole pandemic situation became so acute and many, many businesses realized that they could do a substantial amount of business remotely. So being able to reside here in the city of Prescott, but being able to continue to conduct business remotely, I think tied in extremely well with their development of that material, and I think it's being demonstrated by the amount of interest that we're receiving from it. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-200 with Heart and Soul Media for an economic development marketing campaign.
Second?
Motion is second, please vote.
Thank you.
Very good. Now we'll move on to item 10A, liquor license.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 11 hotel liquor license application from Jeffrey Craig Miller, applicant for Hotel St. Michael, location 205 West Gurley Street. The application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Well, very good. Is the applicant here and present? You want to come on up and tell us about your new plans for the Hotel St. Michael?
Hi there, Regina Kaiser, General Manager. Right now, the only new plan is potentially getting the bar open downstairs, and they'll send the plans to the city council for approval. That's not going to happen until later on this, at the end of the summer.
Well, I know the Hotel St. Michael has been acquired by a different hospitality group.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about their plans? Are you aware of them? And I know they're headquartered in Sino, California, and have quite a number of properties. And I think some of them are really focused on historical property nature like St. Michael's.
That is correct. So the Springboard Hospitality, they were brought on by the new owner, who was actually out of Sedona to manage the day-to-day operations of the hotel. Plans to get the boucher open for dinner are in the works to get the ballroom back open, and that's kind of it for right now.
Well, I think that's kind of exciting, considering how many groups utilize the ballroom at St. Michael's and being able to maintain all those terrific shops inside the kind of business area.
Yes.
I'm just kind of pleased that we can get back up to full operations and be able to utilize such a great historic property.
Yes, I am as well.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Motion is second, please vote. Unfortunately, my screen is now frozen.
That's why Jennifer came in to try and help you, Mayor. Is that a yes?
That's why she suggested I log out and log back in.
Is that a yes vote on the closing of the public hearing?
Yes vote, yes.
Thank you. Passes seven zero.
All right, we have another motion.
Yeah, there's another motion, Kathy.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 243825 for a new Series 11 hotel liquor license application for the iconic Hotel St. Michael.
Second?
Motion is second, please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you. Passes seven zero.
Okay, that completes that liquor license process?
It does.
Now we'll move to the regular agenda.
Approval of city contract number 2023-207 for the annual subscription renewal for Microsoft 365. Funding is available through cost recovery and various city department funds.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Nate Keegan, IT Director. What you have in front of you today is basically what it says. It's a renewal for Microsoft 365. The cost difference between this year and last year has to do with the addition of some cybersecurity elements for, for, I guess, the benefit of the public. The idea there is you separate something you have, password, and something you physically have, which is a token. It could be a cell phone. It could be a magic widget you plug into a USB port. And the idea being is if I write down my password, put it right here, it doesn't do an attacker any good without stealing my phone, mugging me out in the parking lot. And what that does is it short-circuits a lot of the cybersecurity things you're seeing right now. I'll give you two good examples. One, there's a large county in Southern California. It's not San Diego. It's not LA County. It's not Riverside County. They just coughed up $1.5 million to get their data back. That was in the last two weeks. There's a municipality in Massachusetts who's in Week Five of being completely down because of ransomware. What is in this item that's new helps us short-circuit those kind of attacks. So I could talk about cybersecurity all day. I don't think anybody's as excited about that as I am. I'd be more than happy to take your questions, your slings and arrows, whatever you'd like to do.
We have any concerns or comments? Councilmember Rusing?
Well, I would just like to comment that I'm sure the public is aware that it's, we're just under a constant onslaught with cybersecurity, and we need to keep up with it. It's, it's very hard to keep one jump ahead of these guys. They're so professional. And I want to thank Mr. Keegan for hopefully keeping us protected. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-207.
Second?
Motion is second, please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 11B.
Public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 2023-1830 implementing the increased bulk water dispensing station rates and making related amendments to the Prescott City Code 2-1-18B3 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title II, Departments, Chapter 2-1, Public Works Department, Section 2-2-18, Utilities Division Water Rates, Subsection 2-1-18B3 Bulk Water Dispensing Rates, adding a severance clause and providing for a delayed effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Lars Johnson, Deputy Finance Director. I have just a short introduction into the subject to benefit the public hearing. These slides you've seen before. Council adopted a notice of intent on March 14th. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the schedule that we've gone through to get to this point.
You can use the clicker, Lars.
Oh, there is, okay. I'm in control, thanks. So again, the notice of intent was published on the website, along with the report which justified the cost that we're seeing to deliver the water to the station. We also published as required in the Daily Courier, in the legal advertising section. And today, there's a public hearing to receive public input and then council's action. For the public's benefit, this is located at 535 Easy Street. I went down and took recent pictures so you could see what the, the new keypad looks like that was upgraded from the previously coin-operated system. Yeah, this is, it's been well-received. I actually met a gentleman filling up there when I took the pictures, and he was very complimentary and, and said the system works very great, great for him. So as far as the upgrades go, I think that's been.
Lars, can you describe some of the deficiencies in the previous coin-operated system?
Yes. I think the Public Works Water Operations could answer that better, but I'll just, from what I know, the system didn't allow precise distribution. So you put coins in, and it would distribute that 49 gallons, no matter how big your, your tank was. So you had no control over that precise amount. Also, of course, dealing with coins, having, you know, the city to process that heavy, the coins over to the bank, it's just been very inefficient for processing as well. I think for, on the citizen's side, they don't have to carry coins around. They don't have to go down to Public Works to buy the water cards anymore. They can access the website, payforwater.com, make a deposit into their account, and show up at the station, enter their, their PIN and account number, and dispense water.
Might as well be a rock.
So currently, the rate is $5.27 per thousand gallons. We're proposing to bring that up to $14 per thousand gallons of water. We calculated the rates based on what the current rate is in our rate structure for non-residential second tier of usage. So basically, what does it cost to bring the water to that dispensing system or station? And then we added on that additional equipment that we had to purchase to. to depreciate that over the next five years. We also use the four-year average of gallons sold at the station to anticipate what we'll need to have for the rate. Lastly, for my background here is where we would sit with the proposed rate as compared to the market in the area. So this was a survey done in March. We would be somewhere there in the middle. Currently, we're the least expensive in the area at $5.27. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mayor, I have a question.
Who? Call Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. Lars, just real quickly going back to, I think maybe two slides before this one. No, I'm sorry, that one, one slide before. So that current rate that we're at, $5.27 per thousand gallons, can you tell me where that, what is that relative to what say a regular citizen in the city who's getting water out of their faucet would be paying? Like, what's the differential there?
That's an excellent question, which I wasn't prepared for.
I think Gwen might have an answer.
Okay, great, thank you, Gwen.
Gwen Rowich, Deputy Director. Sorry about that. I had a feeling someone would ask that question, so I looked it up this morning.
I was curious.
So a 5/8 inch meter base rate is $14.44. I'm sorry, $14.56. And the first 3,000 gallons of water is $4.44. So it's $20 for the first 3,000 gallons of water that a customer on a 5/8 inch meter would receive from the city.
Okay, so essentially, people who are living out of the city were paying, you know, more or less the same or even maybe a little bit better than what someone who's just turning their faucet on. We weren't actually doing the effective part of our policy, which is charging a higher rate for people who live outside of the city limits.
That's correct. And I think, you know, this is a different product in the fact that they have to get it to their house, but definitely.
And the only reason I mention this is because I had someone, you know, complain to me about this. And I think it's important to drive home the point that this is bringing our rate structure into compliance with what we've already adopted as a city. So I just wanted to make that point because I've gotten beaten up on a voicemail a couple of times about this. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mayor, may I comment as well?
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you. Same, I had a phone call from a citizen who is concerned. On the surface of it, absolutely, you know, if you look at, while the price is going up, and I can't do the math, my habit 240%, something like that, all at once, that does seem a big jump. Based on our study session that we had about this, whatever it's been, month and a half ago, something like that, it just underscored for me that we have been, as a city, losing money on this, basically. We've been operating at a loss for quite some time, and we're finally bringing this back, A, into line with our costs, which is very important, and B, into line with essentially the area around us in terms of how much is charged for water that is dispensed in bulk this way. So I, though I do share the concern that bumping it up so much all at once is potentially a burden for some folks. It's, A, once again, in line with what it costs us to provide this service, and B, in line with what other municipalities and areas are charging for this. So I'm in favor of the rate increase as a result of those two things.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Lars, I have a question. Now, this is drinkable, potable water that we're dispensing. I hope none of it's being used for dust control at construction sites because we should be using treated effluent. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. So this is potable water that's for residential use mainly. There are commercial, you know, delivering, the commercial providers that are filling up there and bringing it out to their customers for use at their homes. But, and Public Works could jump in if needed, but there are separate construction hydrants that have a separate rate structure to be used at construction sites.
Okay, all righty, thank you. And then I also wanted to make a point that this is a service that we don't have to provide. And, but we do provide a service for people whose wells aren't producing very well enough GPMs for them. And so I completely support that we provide this service, but we just can't, we just couldn't continue at the rates we were charging. Thank you.
Well, I like to see sometimes when situations like this occur and people have been able to acquire a service at a incredibly low cost, rather than looking at the long-term benefits of that low-cost service, they focus on what happens to bring it up to a reasonable rate that covers our maintenance and providing that service. So a lot of times, it's just a matter of perspective. You know, if you've had, been able to enjoy this service at an incredibly low cost for such a long time, that's where the focus should be, not on the fact that now we're finally bringing it up to a reasonable market rate and being able to provide digital and other easily acceptable and managed dispensing of this product.
Mayor, may I?
I mean, we have a, we have a water policy that says we will not be providing water outside city limits. When you have water distributors utilizing our water dispensing facilities at an incredibly low cost, then they take it out and provide it to users outside city limits at a remarkably low cost that even contracted providers who receive city water had a 30% upcharge, which is our standard rate, for even the commercial core of Chino Valley. They're getting a benefit that even contracted people receiving city water outside city limits don't get. So I think it's important that we try to apply our policy in an equitable way. Any other concerns or comments? Councilwoman can't tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. I also got several phone calls about this. And one of the ladies that I spoke to showed me a bill. And after looking at it, what I think she didn't understand is that the water haulers, because of the price of gas and diesel, mostly diesel, they've had to raise their rates also. So if you consider the rise in the cost of the water itself and then the rise in the delivery, she had made the charge that it was 50% more, and it was close to 50% more in her case. But it was not all because of the water. A lot of it were the services of the hauling of the water. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, for the dust control, which is something anybody building a home or doing any construction is a statute, they have to have a water dust control truck on their property by law. And that is different water. But those companies that actually provide that service have a separate meter, and they purchase that water, and it is metered every single time they fill a truck, and they pay for it on a separate, in a separate way. Thank you.
Councilman Tenny?
Just to clarify, any rate increase that people have seen from water haulers already is not because of this. We have not voted to increase this yet. They may be seeing an increase in the future, potentially, as a result of this. But anybody who's had their, their cost of water hauling to their house go up in past months, it doesn't have anything to do with this yet.
$0.28 for 10 gallons of water is still quite a bargain. All right, do we have any public comment on this?
We do. Tammy, is it Lambert?
Yes.
Tammy Lambert.
Tammy Lambert, 1702 Butterfield Road. And as a person that's been hauling for over 40 years, had a dry well. I just had a question. Can you flip forward? Why the difference between Flagstaff, Chino, and then Prescott? That, you know, a $4 difference between Flagstaff and double what Chino Valley is charging?
Mayor?
Well, I mean, Chino Valley gets water from us. Correct?
I think, I'm not sure if that's, that is, that's the municipality right there, but there are private distribution centers around there. But yeah, that's the town.
Right, and Chino Valley can determine how they want to manage their rates within their municipality. I don't know if they need big stacks of quarters, but you know, that's, that's up to their jurisdiction.
Are you saying the town of Chino Valley is being charged the $14?
No, but the commercial core for Chino Valley is provided water by the City of Prescott. Once they receive that water, and how they want to utilize it is up to their municipal policies. Gwen, do you want to respond to that?
I think I might be able to help a little bit.
Gwen, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Short people. The water hauling station in Chino Valley is located up off of Road 3 North. That is not city water. That's on the town of Chino Valley's water system, provides water to their water hauling station up on Road 3 North. The city does have an agreement with the town of Chino Valley for properties along the highway corridor that may attach to the city's water line in SR 89 as part of an intergovernmental agreement that we have with the town of Chino Valley. But those people who ask to connect to our system must follow city processes and go through approval by this council to connect for commercial or non-residential purposes only along the highway corridor. So I think we're talking about two different things. I believe this nice lady is asking, why is there such a difference between the cost for the City of Prescott to provide water versus the town of Chino Valley to provide water versus the City of Flagstaff to provide water? And I believe the mayor did answer that question. Each water provider has to recover the cost of running their system. And this fee that Lars has done the analysis for is the fee that we need to charge from our water hauling station to recover the cost of the City of Prescott's water system. If Chino Valley's is different, it's probably because they're a lot smaller than we are. I'm not familiar with City of Flagstaff's water hauling or their water system, but I would imagine it's more expensive to run it because they're on a mountain, just like we are.
Mayor, may I?
When topographically challenged, it's more expensive to run your utility system.
Councilman Tenny?
Thank you. It's a great question. We don't have specific answers, of course, why other municipalities charge what they charge. I do know why City of Prescott charges $5.27 today. It's because we hadn't done an analysis of what it was costing us for quite some time. It's entirely possible. That's the case for other municipalities as well. Some of these are round figures, so that speaks to me that that's not exactly what it's been costing us, $6.50 or whatnot. There's obviously no way of any of us up here knowing the answer to your question. Why does Chino Valley charge exactly what they charge? But it's entirely possible they have for some time not done what we hadn't done for some time. And they may be following suit soon. There's no way of us knowing as we sit on the dais here. Each municipality runs their, their systems differently.
All right, any other public comment?
That's all, Mayor.
I have a question. Oh, yeah, she has.
It's up to the mayor.
Tammy Lambert, 1702 Butterfield. I'm just wondering, of that $14, which obviously is a significant jump, and I do appreciate the fact that I've gotten 100 gallons for a quarter 40 years ago. But I'm wondering, of that $14, how much of that is going towards recouping the new modified system?
Mayor, would you like me to answer?
Yeah, if you can.
Okay. So I don't have the exact number, although in the packet, there's the cost estimate. As a percentage of the cost over the five-year period, that new system is, hold on, let me calculate this. It's about 24% of the cost. The majority of the cost come from the volume charges that we're putting into that, you know, the cost to get the water to the station.
And quite frankly, this entire distribution cost has not been looked at at all with any substance for decades, literally. So it was something that was established a long, long time ago, and that there's been very minor incremental increases over that period of time. And then trying to make sure that our distribution costs are aligned with our water policy is just way, 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 way overdue. So I think it's appropriate that we adopt this at this time and make sure that, I mean, quite frankly, if somebody wants to drive out to Chino Valley and fill up out there, then they can certainly do that. But it's our job to make sure that we manage our water portfolio as efficiently as possible and then make sure that we aren't internally kind of violating our own policy. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I think you touched upon what I was going to say, and it's about conservation. When water is cheap, people aren't really motivated to conserve it. But maybe now that it's going to be a little more expensive, maybe people will be motivated to practice water conservation like the people do here in the City of Prescott. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka?
Thank you, Mayor. To kind of piggyback on Councilmember Rusing's comment, for 2,500 gallons, which is probably what a lot of people use per month, even at $14, it's only $35 a month for water. I mean, it's incredible with the system that we have and how we're trying to get people to conserve, and it's only $35 for 2,500 gallons? That's amazing. And so, you know, I have to say, you know, I feel sorry for the folks who've been paying $6 or $5.27, but they're still getting a hell of a deal.
Yeah, they are. And they've been enjoying that for so long. And like I said before, rather than just focusing on the fact that, boy, they had a, they had a sweet deal for a long, long time. And they should be appreciative of that rather than focusing on the fact that the city is bringing the legitimate costs up to current standards. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion is second, please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 20. I'm sorry.
That passes seven zero. Now you can go, Councilman.
The system's got to catch up. I forgot. I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-1830. Second.
Motion is second, please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
I also vote aye.
Sorry, it's the two votes seems to throw this system off. Passes seven zero.
All right, we'll move on to item 11C.
Approval of the city's CDBG Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2023.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Michael McInnes. I'm your Community Development Block Grant Coordinator, your CDBG Coordinator here with the City of Prescott. Be going over two items today. The first item is the Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2023. That program year starts July 1st, 2023, and ends in June 30th, 2024. We're still in Program Year 2022 right now. We're still in program year 2022 right now. The second item is a substantial amendment to our five-year consolidated plan from 2020 to 2024. So first up, our annual action plan. Got some slides here. The 2023 CDBG annual action plan is required every year. It has included a public comment period of 30 days. That was from April 19th to May 19th, so we're through that. We did not receive any public feedback. What the annual action plan is, it's, it's really the application to HUD to continue our CDBG program. And in that action plan, our projects and activities that our CAC, our Citizens Advisory Committee, has recommended after receiving applicants and there's presentations to the CAC members, they've recommended a few of these projects and activities forward. Before I move on, I do have some of the CAC members here, and I just wanted to recognize them. If you are part of that committee, please stand and be recognized. I think I see. All right, thank you. Mary Ann Suddles and Janie Evans. So thank you for being of service and being a big part of this CDBG program. So the 2023 annual action plan will be submitted to HUD after city council approval. Right now, it's estimated for 2023, our fund allocation to be $255,754. That is an estimate, received that a couple of months ago from HUD. Could change. We'll find out the exact amount in October. Usually what we've seen is, you know, more or less $1,000 either way, not, not a huge change. So roundabout, that's what it's going to look like. This next slide shows our CDBG, the history of our grant amounts per year. So I believe this program, the first year was 2,005 for the city. You can see the trend line moving downward over the last 20 years. However, the last five years, pretty steady. What we expect is about, you know, 245 to 250,000 grant.
How does HUD determine these numbers?
They, they use a specific formula, HUD formula, based on population is probably the biggest part of that. And, and then also they, they have data revolving around low to moderate income individuals per community is how they determine that. I've, I, asking HUD specifically, what is the formula? I do not know their secret formula, but they have a formula.
Well, we certainly know that back in 2005, our population was quite a bit lower.
Right.
But perhaps they're using demographic information from annual tenure census data?
Good, that's a good question. So why so high, you know, when we first started? The, the, the big reason for it was there was less communities taking advantage of it, of this program back then. And throughout the years, especially the last, you know, the last 10 years, there's been more communities jumping onto the CDBG, CDBG program and utilizing that. That's, that's the biggest reason for the, the decrease.
Please proceed.
Yes. Wanted to talk about two programs that are active right now. Again, these are two activities for our program year 2022, which isn't over yet, and kind of success stories. New Horizon Disability Empowerment Center and People Who Care, they're both transportation activities. They do a little bit different, though, what they're capable of doing. So far this year, for New Horizons, 348 round trips, 62 Prescott citizens served through CDBG funding. And their clients are usually seniors or clients with physical disabilities. They, they have vans, they have mini buses, specifically as you can see in the photo. They're capable of transporting individuals in wheelchairs. The other transport, transportation act or program is through People Who Care, mostly volunteer run, so it's individual volunteers who are taking low to moderate income seniors to certain places like the grocery store, helping them shop, medical appointments. 5,423 round trips so far this year, 326 Prescott citizens served through CDBG. Now, it's important to recognize these programs and the programs and activities that I'll be speaking about, it's Prescott citizens, and it's only in Prescott, okay? These transports are happening in Prescott, from Prescott to Prescott, not Prescott to Prescott Valley, okay? When we do receive the, the funds for CDBG, this is the breakdown, 20% administration, public service is 15%. Those are caps, we can't exceed that. And then the majority of these funds go towards construction projects. Public service, there's always demand for public service each year that we do this program. Personally, it's, you know, it's not a great amount of money, so we got to use it the best way we can. So our proposed activities, it's transportation programs for low and moderate income seniors and disabled individuals, People Who Care, New Horizons. New applicant this year is a diaper bank through Community Council, and I'll be speaking about that a little bit more. Also, youth and young adult workforce development programs. The bigger, the bigger piece of the pie goes to construction. This year, we're excited, a new applicant with NASCARE's New Hope Wellness Center, and I'll be speaking about that in further detail in just a minute. We're going to continue with U.S. Vets Rehab Project of the Officer Quarters here on the VA campus. And then also the Prescott Minor Home Repair Program, which we're really excited about. Last year was a pilot program. This year, it's, we're, it's, we're going full throttle with it. Thanks a lot, thanks a lot to the Prescott Chamber of Commerce Foundation and Sherri Heine, who's really been spearheading this program with the support of, of the city of Prescott. I'd like to recognize Sherri is here, so thank you, Sherri, for all you do with CDBG. It's very much appreciated. What this program does is help those low to moderate income individuals with minor home repairs. Most of those applicants for this program are seniors, fixed income, of course, all local in Prescott. Give you an example of a success story. We had a applicant, a senior, fixed income widow, didn't have water, hot water for four years here in Prescott. And she got in touch with Sherri, and we were able to go in there, buy a new hot water heater, install that for her, and she's super grateful for what the city of Prescott has done for her. So just something that we're really excited to continue. So. This is the breakdown. Again, the CAC makes the funding recommendations, and these are the funding recommendations that will be found in our annual action plan for 2023. This first spreadsheet is the funding recommendation for public service projects. Again, this is the 15% cap, and that's what that $38,000 represents, 15%. Our construction projects. NASCARE's Wellness Center, again, U.S. Vets, the Officer Quarters, and our Minor Home Repair Program. Next two slides are our new applicants. You know, I just started this job about three months ago, and one of my goals is, is going out there and doing outreach, finding new applicants. I, I think that's so important for this program and, and really sharing what this program can, can do. I'm from Prescott, well, I've lived in Prescott for the last 15 years, had no idea about this program, you know? And I think it's important that the community knows about this and, and what it can do. So this Community Council's diaper bank is a new applicant. It's a new program. And what it is, it's providing diapers and incontinent supplies. Goal is to serve 180 low to moderate income Prescott households, 160 babies, 20 adults with disabilities or seniors in need of those supplies. Our other new applicant is the New Hope Wellness Center. For those not familiar where, about this program, it's located at the, the old Savoini Homestead, south on Weiss Bar, across the street from Safeway. Okay, it's kind of down there. They've been there for a while, since 2005, the New Hope Wellness Center purchased it and, and started serving the public there. Has dual-use transitional living space for populations struggling with mental health issues, and they also provide outpatient group therapy onsite for low to moderate income individuals. They, they work with the access population. They do a really outstanding job, so. The project is internal renovations, some, some, some in the back patio as well. And that is, that is it for the annual action plan item. Any, any questions that the council might have?
Well, I do want to say thank you, Michael, for your efforts to expand the applicant pool to access some of these funds. I know when I was a council liaison to CDBG six years ago or so, one thing I noticed when I analyzed the awards over the previous five years, it seemed like there were certain organizations that had learned how to navigate this whole application process and were regularly receiving allocations, to the extent that it almost looked like they were planning on having funds for their operating budgets that they would count on. And I thought it would be much better to broaden the availability of these funds and the benefits that come from serving low and moderate income households, including some of the construction work that sometimes may take two years or more to complete.
That's right.
So you can award it, and it shows up as an award, but it may not be completed until maybe a couple of years as the project proceeds. So I think that's laudable. And of course, when I first saw the diaper bank, I thought that might be a flood control, but maybe in a smaller sense, it actually is. Come on, that was kind of fun.
I laughed.
So I appreciate that, and I think broadening that scope and making sure that organizations within the community realize that funding is available, and then helping them to navigate the application process so they can receive some support. Council, councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming today. I actually served on this committee myself, and I was wondering, I didn't see anything up there about the neighborhood revitalization. Do you have a dollar amount spent on that? And could you give us maybe an idea of a project that you've done? And then you can answer in just a second. But also, one of the other things I discovered when I was on that committee is exactly what you spoke about initially, is how do we get the word out? Do we have some money we can spend on marketing? Because there are a lot of people out there that could use that minor home repair, and you're right, they just don't know about it. And then I understand from Chelsea that there is a $5,000 cap on that. Is that correct still?
That's correct.
Okay. So how can we get the word out to people that need that? How can we simplify that application process? But also, can you talk, can you speak to the neighborhood revitalization dollars that we've spent and maybe a couple of projects that you've done with that, with the money?
Right. Okay, so the first question regarding neighborhood revitalization, I, I personally have not been involved with any neighborhood revitalization projects with CDBG, although I do understand there was a pretty expansive one in the Dexter neighborhood a few years ago that was very successful. This is something we want to look at. This is something that will be discussed in the CAC meetings and, and is a priority always move in forward in a program like, like this.
Because this money was actually intended, when it was first started, was intended for that use, it is, you know, now diversified, which is fine. But I would like to have you look into that because, you know, Prescott being an old community and we, most of our residents live below the poverty level, there are some projects, I think, that could be chaperoned into this program in a dire need that would not only help the people living there, but ultimately it helps the whole community when you come into these older communities. So anyway, I would love to encourage you to look into that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a good question. The other question that you had was getting the word out. That is very much a hot topic of how we're going to do that, especially with minor home repair program. And I'll tell you one thing, I have Sherri Heine here. It started off fairly slow, and now it's really going pretty fast, and the word is getting out. You know, we, we're getting calls pretty regularly now for, for help. Now, not everyone can qualify yet. Again, this is, Prescott Valley doesn't have CDBG, Chino Valley doesn't have a CDBG, Prescott has CDBG. They're calling us, and, and they can't, we just work with the citizens of Prescott.
And as a reminder, a subrecipient can actually be a profit-making company. So for example, a general contractor out there working in the community as a for-profit company can actually provide these services. But the complaint has been that the application is too long and too arduous, and sometimes those needs are immediate. So that's another thing I would love to have you work on, is trying to shorten that on a case-by-case basis, because it, it's just too cumbersome. The people cannot do it. And many times, the elderly people, they can't go online, they don't know how to navigate the system. So it, it needs to be a little more user-friendly.
All right, that's, that's good feedback. Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you.
We'll be looking into that for, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that effort in the Dexter neighborhood. The city actually applied for some funding to be able to put in curb and gutter on some of those Dexter streets, which they did. And then we followed that up with a community cleanup program where we offered free dumpsters over at the Prescott High School for people in that community to bring over whatever they had discarded in their front yards and things like that. And that was quite successful. And after that, then we started to see private investment coming into the community to build some of these smaller apartment complexes, which quite frankly, address some of our concerns about workforce and affordable housing options. So it just shows you that when you have a little more of a strategic look at how best to help those areas that, you're right, a lot of people that lived in that area were probably well below the poverty line or at or near it, and helped to generate a upgrade in their community and their neighborhood, and more people were able to utilize low-cost apartment options that they wouldn't have had otherwise. Councilmember Rusin.
Are you done?
I just wanted to say that eradicating the blight is exactly the consequence, and the economic development is the consequence of eradicating the blight, which is what this money was intended for. So it'd be nice to see that we can get some of that money to go towards what it was intended for, because we do have those aged neighborhoods that need that work. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment that this is a wonderful program, and it's an example of federal tax dollars being brought back and invested into our community, that the city of Prescott's sales tax dollars are not used for this program, but it's our federal tax dollars being brought home. Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move that we approve the city's CDBG annual action plan for program year 2023.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Very good, we'll move on to item D.
Approval of substantial amendment to the city's CDBG five-year consolidated plan 2020 to 2024.
Okay. And it was, it was in the same PowerPoint, I believe. Thank you. I'll go, I'll, I'll move to it. Okay, substantial amendment, this will be, I think it- Okay, substantial amendment, this will be, I think, a bit quick here. We're asking for a substantial amendment to our five-year consolidated plan for CDBG specific. Our consolidated plan goes from year 2020 to 2024. We actually have two more years left. This is all regarding the Community Development Block Grant for COVID money that we received in 2021. That amounted to $427,198. Okay, so this was called still CDBG, but separate bucket within CDBG, CDBGCV for COVID. The purpose of this grant was to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19 pandemic as well as future pandemics. And that's important there because this allows us to continue to utilize this award. When we received the fund or the grant in 2021, we created the Prescott Cares Program. So when you hear the Prescott Cares Program, basically that's our CDBGCV fund. And the Prescott Cares Program is administered by the Chamber of Commerce Foundation in partnership with the City of Prescott. So here's where we're at currently with the Prescott Cares Program. When we initially created it, we focused on economic development, basic needs. There's two programs. One was to support small and micro businesses in the City of Prescott during the pandemic. And the other part of it was to aid low and moderate income individuals with rent, mortgage, and/or utility expenses. And those are the numbers there that was expended since 2021. Our current balance is $258,964.44. Our last application for this program for Prescott Cares was back in the fall.
Mayor Protem, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a question. So it's, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, absolutely.
The remaining balance is 258,964.44. There's been some talk in the ongoing debt ceiling negotiations that they're talking about clawing back unused COVID money. Do you think that'll have any implications for this program?
That's a good question. So far, no. Specifically with this fund, with this HUD program, I was actually in a HUD training today where that hasn't been part of the conversation in Washington.
Okay, I just wanted, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't know if that's going to change, but right now it's not. So they actually extended our use. We were supposed to spend 80% of it by March of 2024. They got rid of that. We have till 2027 to spend it. Our recommendation is to spend it as quickly as possible before they take it back. So we limited ourselves when we created Prescott Cares to these two programs. And this is what we're going to try to do. This is the specific language that is the amendment. An amendment to the city's 2020-24 CDBG consolidated plan to include funding, facilities, and infrastructure improvements, basic needs, emergency and transitional shelters, and administration, specifically these two points. That's what we're adding. Question might be, why didn't we do this in the first place? Well, we thought that, you know, the economic development, that we were going to get so much demand, it would be pretty easy to expend all that. And that ended up not being the case.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So can you give me an example, or maybe Sherry might be able to too, of what, like, these additional uses will allow us to expend this money on?
Yeah, I can. So, you know, facilities and infrastructure and emergency and transitional shelters, we basically were checking all the boxes for what we can spend the money on. There are applicants, potential applicants that are interested in using this fund. There has to be a tieback somehow to COVID or use towards a future pandemic. That's the caveat. And that's where we really have to pay attention.
So does that mean you think that with these additional, this expanded language, that you'll be able to spend through the remainder of this money relatively quickly, then?
We hope so.
Okay, thank you.
U.S. Vets is another potential applicant. I think they were here a few weeks ago in a study session, maybe talking about a program which they had through COVID that was kind of disappearing. They're hoping to utilize these monies as well for their program. So there are applicants, but this is just the amendment and just giving us the flexibility to do more.
Well, we've certainly seen a degradation of our healthcare delivery services within the community. And if we could possibly utilize this to restore some of those valuable programs, I think that would fall into that category of preparing for a future pandemic or some type of viral outbreak of some sort. Quite frankly, when I was working in my professional career and dealing with a lot of the large Veterans Administration hospitals, they had a process called Drop Money, which means that over the course of their fiscal year, they would manage their finances very efficiently and kind of modestly until they got near the end of their fiscal year. And they realized if they didn't spend all that money, then they would get cut back the following year. So there was real efforts to spend money without really looking at how it was spent and ended up wasting a lot of money. And I'd rather make sure that we spend this money in really valuable projects. And if we end up with extra money at the end of the road that didn't apply to valuable projects, then so be it. Maybe we send it back. Those are all our tax dollars, even though they're handled through multiple processes and administrative support for those programs. You know, if we use it for really good programs, then I think that's substantial and justified. Are we, do you want to continue here?
This is, that's it. This amendment was available for a 30-day public review and comment period from April 19th to May 19th, 2023. No public comment was received. When we do receive applicants and it goes through the CAC, those recommendations would be forward to council as well for their approval. Any questions?
Councilmember Roussing?
Thank you. Michael, I was reviewing this substantial amendment. And I'd like to direct your attention to page 30 or page 118, AP-75 Barriers to Affordable Housing-91.220J. And it talks about workforce housing and the Prescott City Council and the five-year plan and also our general plan. And it says here in the third paragraph, "Actions it planned to remove or ameliorate the negative effects of public policies that serve as barriers to affordable housing such as land use controls, tax policies affecting land, zoning ordinances, building codes, fees and charges, growth limitations, and policies affecting the return on residential investment." Can you explain that to me?
Okay. That one might be a tough one. I would have to defer. And now, I think you might be looking at the annual action plan. Is that, what was, what section was?
It's the annual action plan, program year 2023. It's page 30.
That's not this item.
That was the last agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they were combined. I got lost.
What I can do is I can look more into that for you and get in contact with you for clarification, for sure.
I was somewhat confused as to what that meant, if it was going to somehow negate our zoning or we were going to become subservient to the plan or, okay.
No, again, one of the great things about CDBG is really puts the power of this grant money, not in the state's hands, but in our hands, in the local government's hands. And we have control.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Councilwoman can tell me.
Yeah, I wanted to just read something. I was looking for it. I had read it last night, but I wanted to just report again for the benefit of people listening, that all CDBG applications being considered must support at least one of three national objectives. Number one, benefit to low and moderate income persons. Number two, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight. That's the one I'm talking about. Number three, activities designed to meet community development needs having a particular urgency. And the urgency part is the part that has not been able to be satisfied because of the lengthy, you know, contractual agreements. So again, I hate to beat a dead horse, but those are very important things for the public to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Tenny?
I think this is great. We really appreciate the work that you've done. It's been a privilege as the CDBG CAC liaison to see this work in progress. Appreciate it.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, let's, I'll entertain a motion on this five-year consolidated plan substantial amendment.
Mayor, I move to approve the substantial amendment to the 2020 to 2024 CDBG consolidated plan.
Second?
Motion is second. Please vote. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our agenda for today.
No, Mayor, we have one more item.
One more? We do?
We do, the legislative update.
I request to decide her back on the agenda.
All right. Oh, well, I didn't get an amendment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman. Deputy City Manager here to give you a legislative update. Oh, perfect, it's on the screen. We'll start with the state budget. This is the biggest news that's happened over the last couple of weeks down at the legislature. It was an $18 billion budget overall that they approved and that the governor signed. Fortunately, the 3.5 million for the Glassford Downs Regional Park was included in the budget. And now we can move forward. That's a 50-50 split between us and Prescott Valley for the purchase of land on Glassford Hill. We have $1 million in hotshot funding, which was included in the base budget as it has been for a good number of years. And that's continuing.
That's for the PSPRS pension fund.
Correct. Yes, that goes directly to that PSPRS fund. The next bullet is the 15.3 million for the Prescott Frontier Days Capital Improvement Plan at the rodeo grounds. And this is something, as we've communicated with council, not something that we were aware of as it was making its way apparently through the negotiation process at the budget and at the legislature. We found out about it with basically everybody else once the budget was released and then quickly approved thereafter. And so I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion about that particular one. But that is the number, 15.3 million. The next couple are just some points of interest for our region. 7 million was appropriated for the Verde River Headwater State Park. That's something that the town of Chino Valley had worked a lot on. And then just under 10 million for the Glassford Hill Road Improvements, which is something Prescott Valley and Simpo helped coordinate and lead the efforts on. And then something interesting for, in relation to the airport, there was $20 million for the ADOT Airport Improvement Projects. And so we're hoping that some of that will come towards us as we work towards that every year. So those are good things. Let me see if I can.
Is that specifically for Prescott Regional or is that for all airports throughout the state?
Throughout the state, yeah. So we'd be eligible to apply for those. The next couple of bills, and this is kind of wonky, I apologize, but House Bill 2536 is the bill that deals a lot with the zoning, the preemption on zoning, parking, accessory dwelling units, a lot of things that would impact local governments' abilities to regulate growth and development in the way that we see fit here locally. I spoke with Barry Aaron's this morning. And as we've given you updates throughout the session, this bill has had a lot of iterations. It's still not a good bill whatsoever for local governments, but there's more and more confidence gaining that it is not going to be approved. There's just not the support for it. In fact, last week before the legislature adjourned, they retained it on the calendar, so to speak, meaning they didn't bring it to a vote, most likely because the votes weren't quite there. And what we're hearing and what Barry's hearing on the ground directly is that it doesn't look like it will be passed this session. We're going to keep an eye on it. We're going to keep communicating. The League of Cities, this is one of their very top priorities now. And they're very much opposed, as well as all cities in the state. Senate Bill 1131, this is something that's come back from the dead. This was, residential rental bill was vetoed by the governor a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, it appears that as part of budget negotiations, it's been brought back to life. However, it has been amended so that it would begin in January of 2025 instead of immediately. So while that's helpful, that still is a $2 million hit to us annually, a million to streets and a million to general fund. There are some discussions, however, that there's negotiations, hopefully that will play out to the favor of cities and towns holding us harmless, that if this were to take place and be voted on, it still has to be voted on by the Senate before it goes back to the governor. And if that was the case and she approved it, then we're hoping that there's some negotiations going on. The League of Cities is working on it. Barry gave me some insights this morning that it would hold us harmless by increasing shared revenues in other places, for example. That might be one of the options. So there's still a lot to be seen on that. And we're working on it. But as it currently stands, this would be a big hit to us starting in 2025. And the next two bills, these have been, we've been tracking these all session, partisan elections here at the local level, allowing the option to have partisan elections. That was just vetoed yesterday by the governor, which overall is a good thing, in my opinion. And the next bill, 1025, has to do with those political signs. We have two zones, sign-free zones in the city that were established by statute that help us a lot with keeping that kind of clutter out of the right of way. That was also, if I can scroll down just a little more, that was vetoed by the governor yesterday as well, which helps us greatly to keep those sign-free zones. And then something else, just the last bullet point, important to note that they have adjourned, not completely, signy-dye, but they've adjourned temporarily until June 12th. And they're expected to come back to talk about that housing bill, the residential rental tax, Prop 400 for the transportation funding down there in Maricopa County, and some other big items. And they're expected to not be in session very long before they adjourn for good. And we're hoping that's the case because they can do more harm than good usually. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, Tyler, going back to the budget process, I just want to clarify to make sure that I understood what you said correctly because you kind of went past it, that $15.3 million from Prescott Frontier Days to Prescott Frontier Days for capital improvements to rodeo grounds. You're telling me that the city staff didn't have any awareness to that before that appropriation got announced and?
That is correct. We found out about it when the budget documents were released.
That seems a little bit unusual to me. Would you agree?
That is not typical. I will say that. That's a fair statement.
I mean, the reason I ask is because it seems unusual to me in the sense that if I'm not mistaken, the City of Prescott owns the rodeo grounds. And it's shocking to me that a nonprofit that leases property from the City of Prescott at a dollar a year sought and received $15 million without even really noticing that us that they were doing that. I mean, I was here for the study session when they did their master plan, but this seems ridiculous to me. I'm just, sorry, I'm gobsmacked.
Well, we didn't lobby for it. That's the interesting thing. We weren't seeking that.
No, the city, Barry Aaron's, did not know about it till the budget documents were released. City staff did not either. Not the typical process.
Councilman Tenny?
It's certainly worth noting that we were aware of the master plan that had been brought to us both on a couple of different levels and in a study session. And there was general positive reaction from the city council about the stage that it was at. But it's also very important to note that no one brought to us the idea of $15 million going from the state budget to Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated. And we'll just see if that ends up being a positive for the city or not as we move forward. But yeah, we were not made aware of that. And it'd be interesting to see. I think, I do understand that, you know, part of what may have been in the minds of our local representatives as they did this was that there'd been that there'd been a general favorable impression by the council for their plans. But again, nothing came our way directly in terms of, we'd be interested in seeing this money go to an organization that leases our city property.
I have to reinforce that perception, even though the master plan would paint it a very attractive picture. It was very conceptual in how it was presented to us without any of the detail that apparently some of our state representatives appeared to claim that this was a shovel-ready project, and that was one of the components of the request from the state budget allocation. And it's far, far, far from shovel-ready. There's a lot of details that would have to be analyzed and included in an extended, vastly extended Prescott Frontier Days lease to create such a broad, multifaceted entertainment program, facility, and management out there. So I've made this comment to a number of people. I didn't have any knowledge that this was going to happen. I was driving into work on Thursday morning and listening to a radio spot on KYCA and found out that this had actually been proposed and granted. And just like the Mayor Protem said, you know, we own the rodeo grounds, so to have a management company step forward and convince our representatives to ask for and receive this kind of an allocation without even picking up the phone and saying, oh, by the way, do you support this budget ask? No one seemed to think that that was important. So again, it's very head scratching for me, too, to see such a large amount of state tax dollars being allocated to a program that we're not even informed of. Do we have any other public comments?
I'd like.
Council, member Rusing.
Thank you. Tyler, do you have any details on these matching funds for the rodeo, 15.3? Is it 100% match, 20%? Do we know, are we still in the dark about that, or?
I will say, what I've heard from Representative Bliss is that the intent of the money was to be matched 100% or more. However, looking through the budget documents themselves, I didn't see any fiscal note. I didn't see anything placed in there to specify that. I could be missing it, but I've only heard that verbally, that that is the case.
Okay. And then also on our regional, Glassford Dells Regional State Park funds, there's a match involved?
There is, yes. And that does have a fiscal note, for example, that a match will need to be made before the money is given to us.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know that there's been a perception that some toes have been stepped on in this situation, and that they are a nonprofit that Prescott owns the rodeo ground. I got to tell you, if somebody's willing to invest $40 million in something they don't even own, that's incredible. I mean, you know, I think that, you know, being a feed guy, I hate to use this comparison, but it's like looking a gift horse in the mouth. I really do think that the rodeo was almost as surprised as we are up here that that ended up happening. And so, you know, it wasn't some nefarious back room, smoke-filled room situation. It was the state investing through our representatives in Prescott and investing in Frontier Days. That's my read on it.
Counselwoman Cantelme.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. Could we have asked for a $15 million for a new fire station and a police station?
We can ask for anything, Councilwoman, yes.
Okay, we need to do that next time, FYI. By the way, if that money is awarded, how is that received and who administers that money? Is that the city because we are the owner of the land, or who does, what's the process?
I honestly do not know. I'm not sure of that process once it goes forward. In this case, I mean, if it was a city, clearly the Glassford Dells partnership between Prescott, Prescott Valley, but I'm frankly not sure.
I wonder if our city attorney knows the answer to that.
I don't. And I had some discussions about this earlier today. It's one of those things we need to look at in terms of whether there's a fiscal agent of some sort. I don't have an answer at this moment.
I understand it doesn't come all, it's not one big pocket of money. It comes, I believe, when you receive money like this, you don't get it all at one time. There's some strings attached, of course.
Generally, that's true, but again, and I don't speak for Tyler, but I don't know yet what those are and need to dig into a little bit.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Shishka. It is incredible, like, that someone would seek and receive $15 million to improve property that they don't own. And I'm not a feed guy, but I do own property and I rent it out to people. And if one of my tenants came to me and said, hey, Brandon, guess what? I got $15 million from the bank to improve your property. Oh, and by the way, as a property owner, you're going to have to go before P&amp;Z to get your property that you own rezoned. I'd start thinking about voiding their lease for getting out in front of themselves. That's me. And I'm not saying that we should do that with the rodeo, but I am saying that, to me, this is a pretty significant slight. It's not just like they stepped on our toes. They sought and received money to improve something that they don't own. That's incredible, as you said, perfect.
But we approved their master plan.
No, it was a study session. We didn't approve it. We sat here and said, okay, that's coming down the pipe, but I don't remember. Sarah, do you have the minutes from that meeting? Did we vote to approve it?
No.
You wouldn't have taken action.
Study sessions don't require action. Councilman Tenny.
I don't disagree philosophically with some of the things that are being said. However, it is the case that this land has been leased to them for quite some time for exactly the purpose that they've been doing, improving and using the facilities that are there for the benefit of Prescott and Arizona broadly. So it's not incredible in that sense at all that they're looking to continue to do that. The fact that they're looking to make $40 million in improvements did not blindside a single person up here who's not being disingenuous. They talked with us specifically about that. It's true, we've taken a vote on that. We don't need to take a vote on it. That's their master plan. We do need to take a vote on, you know, whether we'll extend their lease, and that's upcoming. And I'm sure we'll receive a lot of citizen feedback in the meantime, and I'm very interested in hearing that and considering things. But it's not a surprise at all that they're looking to improve the land that we lease to them, because they've been doing that for years and have talked with us specifically about their plans to continue to do so.
Well, you better believe we're going to be voting on their master plan regardless of what your assessment of that is. Any other comments or concerns?
We have public comment, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ralph Haas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to comment on the proposed budgetary earmark for Prescott Frontier Days. This morning, Arizona Republic published an article written by Ray Stern, and the article in part addressed the gift clause, concerns that surround this particular project. And in that article, former county, or former city attorney, John Palladini, was quoted as saying, "It's never a violation until the court tells you it's a violation." And that was in reference to the gift clause concerns. Interestingly, what Mr. Palladini said was, I'll repeat, "It's never a violation until the court tells you it's a violation." He didn't say unless the court tells you it's violation. And that rationale, I think, should be a concern. If I use that rationale, for instance, to use the power of attorney to transfer all of my mother's funds from her account to my personal account or to the account of a favored charity that I personally liked, according to this rationale, I would not say that that would be a violation of my fiduciary duty until a court told me that it was a violation of my fiduciary duty. My question is, do we want to have this rationale used by elected officials to determine how they're going to disperse funds that are taxes belonging to the public? Going back to this example, I would expect, all of you would agree, that my mother should not have to file a lawsuit and have a court tell me that I'm violating my fiduciary duty by converting all of her funds. We would all want me to do that well in advance of ever having to go to, have my mother have to go to court and have a court tell me that that's a violation. And what I'm suggesting is, because of the gift clause concerns regarding this, we should be not requiring a lawsuit to be filed to determine whether it's a conflict with the Arizona Constitution Clause. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Thalassidas.
Got to move it way down. So, council members, I have talked with you previously about my objections as a neighbor to the master plan. I'm not going to do that today. I challenged myself to think about what if this property, this plan was going to go on property that had no barriers to development? Would I still have concerns? I did attend the one public meeting that the Prescott Frontier Days, and I'm going to call them PFD from now on, held on Saturday, May 13th. Greg Mangarelli was the spokesperson at that meeting, and he stated that no city funds would be used for the expansion. I took exception to that statement then, and I do even more so now. In the Arizona Republic article that Mr. Hess just referred to, PFD President Ron Ausley was quoted as saying, in relation to keeping Mayor Good in the dark, "The rodeo officials certainly kept it quiet when they began working with legislators on it. That was a business decision to prevent anyone else from," in quotes, "cutting up the pie." Furthermore, Ausley's quote is consistent with what Mangarelli said last week on KYCA, where he made reference to keeping this under wraps. In my view, the intent was very clear. PFD was fearful that the city, or even another public entity in this region, might have other priorities for that money. As Councilmember Cantelme stated, the first thing that came to my mind was a fire station. When the fire chief stands up here and tells the general plan and tells you that we are approaching 11 minutes on response times, and that's outside of what he's comfortable with, you might want to talk about a new fire station. By not asking our representatives, or you, the city council, or engaging the public, our legislative delegation decided that the thing that would do the most public good with that money was to award it to a private group that wanted to keep discussions of this award secret from all of us, including you. In my mind, that is taking money away from the city, because it takes money away from city priorities that you all talk about in front of all of us, on behalf of us. They did present an economic study that this appropriation is supposedly based on, and it's concerning. First of all, it was paid for by the recipient of the money, and in that study, the consultant states that the report of all the financial numbers were provided by PFD. It's not an independent report. Even if these numbers are good, there's still no conclusive test of the gift clause. There hasn't been any discussion of the gift clause. So I'm urging you today, as our representatives, don't do what your former city attorney suggests that Mr. Hess referenced. Don't force citizens to litigate this matter. I would ask you to support an inquiry to the Arizona Attorney General's Office. Ask that office to look into this. You can't force that office to do it, but you can make a request, and it'll carry weight if it comes from this body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie McMinn.
I'm a tall person. Bonnie McMinn, 954 Broken Branch in Prescott. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. I also attended the meeting on Saturday, May 13th. I would like to, first of all, point out that it was not advertised by PFD. The rodeo personnel stated that it was, in fact, the third meeting, but there was no one in that meeting that I talked to, and I talked to a number of people who had any idea that this was happening. And in fact, PFD did not advertise it themselves. It actually came via the city council, the Prescott City Facebook and website. So that's a big problem if we want public engagement. And, you know, obviously, the next meeting, which I guess is actually on the website now, is June 6th, but I would implore the city to ask their tenant to at least advertise this meeting. The process thus far has been, lacks seriously in transparency. I had a personal conversation in a public setting on May 13th with Representative Winn prior to the meeting, and I just said, how did this come out? How did this come about? Certainly, there were other pressing priorities. And he said, "I listen to my constituents." That is a direct quote. And I said, what about water? What about PFAS? What about arsenic? What about some of the other priorities, police, fire, et cetera? And he said, well, I sit on the appropriations committee. There's different ways for you to get water mitigation for taking care of that stuff. And I said, well, with this money, is this a grant? Is it a loan? Or is it a gift? He said, it is a gift. Now, that's me having a conversation. That's really not what I'm here to talk about. Mayor Good actually presented part of what Bliss's presentation was. She had four points, how they allocated this money and how they determined that this entity should get it. The first was that she talked, they listed their stakeholders, and then she segued immediately, because I can tell you, there were a number of stakeholders that were not on the documentation that this body saw in March. Then she said, well, we talked to our other bodies, legislative colleagues. So what I'm here to talk about is the stakeholders. So the stakeholders that were listed and the stakeholders that they are holding as precious to them are people who will benefit from the rodeo, in theory, and entities. Now, the city of Prescott, Mayor Good was mentioned specifically. The city potentially can benefit from this. But a stakeholder is either an individual group or organization that is impacted by the outcome of a project or business venture. You can look up stakeholder. It's a variation of this definition. So what are we missing here? The neighborhoods. There was members of the Gail Gardner Neighborhood and Specific Plan, 12 physical neighborhoods that are directly across the street from the rodeo. They were not consulted. Their roots go back to 1909, at least four years before the rodeo was moved from Forbing Park to its current location at Gail Gardner Fair and Chimera Street. I contend that all neighborhoods in this west and south part of Prescott are stakeholders. Anybody who is driving this, it's a major collector road, so we all are having issues with the growth that they are talking about. But they missed two other significant stakeholders, the Prescott Farmers Market compost. The city has allowed the farmers market to utilize that.
McMinn, can you please conclude your remarks?
Yes. And then finally, without an actual canvas, there are more than 30 businesses that are in this area, not the least of which is Fry's, which is very large, directly across the street, the U.S. Post Office, and CVS. street, the U.S. Post Office, and CVS. So I implore this body to demand that the stakeholders be contacted and have a part in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Mechanic.
Mr. Mayor and Council, first, a lot of discussion here about problems with the proposal from the rodeo. I'm not here to talk about that proposal. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, there's a lot of steps here to deal with their proposal. I am not opposed to the rodeo, let's make that clear, the way it exists. The public supports the rodeo. It's a historic, important landmark for our community. We don't want to get rid of the rodeo. That doesn't mean anything they want, we want. I'm not going to address the neighborhood issues because they need to be addressed. There are major issues here, no question about it, regarding traffic and noise. This is not the time to discuss it. As I said, there'll be many venues to discuss. They need to do a traffic study, and they should do a noise study also. There's been a lot of discussion here, and Councilwoman Cantelme said, maybe next time we can get money for a fire station? Sorry, Representative Bliss said there won't be a next time. This is a one-time deal. The point is this, if this money is not constitutional and is not distributed to the rodeo, there may not be other alternatives for this community to get money that was available for every other community in the state. Because of the way this was handled, we may be the only community to lose this money. I wanted to focus on the gift clause and update what was in the republic. I've talked to, in addition to the Goldwater Institute, Arizona Center for Law and the Public Interest, that's a right-wing organization and a left-leaning organization. They both are studying this issue. As you noticed, in the republic, there was no lawyer who said this was constitutional. Even the legislative council was not consulted. And that's another long-term issue we can discuss later. In addition to the two legal organizations I talked about, I contacted the Arizona Attorney General's office. And certainly, a letter from the city would be very helpful. Instead of having one of these two organizations sue the state, it's much better to have the Attorney General act for the constitution of this state and avoid litigation, as Mr. I just want to finally say that since March 3rd, to cover some of the information you said, these people were meeting since March 3rd, unbeknownst to the public, unbeknownst to the city of Prescott. I'm talking about two representatives from the state, and I'm talking about other people from the rodeo.
Please conclude your remarks.
And just finally, I wanted to remark to Mr. Shishka's comment that we should be happy if somebody wants to invest $40 million. They're not investing their own money. It'd be great if they were investing their own money, but that's taxpayer money. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, very good. That does conclude our agenda today. And I'll bring an appropriate quote from my favorite president, Ronald Reagan, considering all the cost escalations and other things that we're dealing with in a broad sense here. "We don't have inflation because the people are living too well. We have inflation because the government is living too well." This meeting is adjourned.